Almost summer out, I don't know. It's gonna stop soon, right? But I was hoping it would just stay forever, but it's inevitable, it's gonna get cold. We have a light agenda tonight, so we'll see how this goes when we have a light agenda, it usually goes long. But we have homeowners associations as the second item on the agenda. And we'll follow the order that's on the agenda. Is there anyone from Oak Island? Sebastian Pigeon here tonight? How about Autumn Woods? I don't see Rick Scardino, but anyone else from Autumn Woods? Okay, Ravina East, Greg, I just talked to you, so do you have anything to share with us tonight? Yeah.
Well, thank you. Very excited for.
Yeah, and so this is a fun topic because it gets interesting because we have a downtown water system that we want to connect to Lake Michigan water because of the chemicals that were, you know, what is it, radium, right? That comes out of in the county and the I E P A is telling us to reduce it. That's a deep well system, and so the idea was if we connect to the Lake Michigan water, we don't have to worry about putting that mitigation in. It's not an approved decision yet, but it's only contained to the downtown. And then throughout the village, and that it would be cost prohibitive to bring water everywhere. And then throughout the village, there's private wells in some of the HOAs that serve them. Some of the subdivisions are served by Lake County water, either Lake Michigan or Lake County well water. But they're all different in the HOA. So we've never been able to, I know a number of years ago, I don't know if it was 20 years ago, there was an advisory referendum, George, you might remember, to, you know, did the residents want to bring Lake Michigan water all throughout the village? And the problem was it was the price tag of something like $6,000 a year for the average house for 30 years if it was financed, right? And so the residents on the advisory referendum voted it down. So I think the water thing has been more opportunistic situations where the the HOAs and we're also a big HOA one where the HOAs figure out, maybe they can tap into it or, you know, waters nearby and they decide to do it. But as far as the village doing it, you know, on a whole, that's not something we're looking at, but you're near Mundaline, I don't know if there's, if there's an interest. Is there something that we could look, Jeff, our village engineer, is there a way to for them to tap into Mundaline there or something in their area if you wanted to? Did I answer your question as best I could? Yeah, and then the way we're set up is we're structured, limited government, so there's no property tax from the village. So then, you know, the HOAs end up paying for a lot of that, right? Unless there's some grant funding somehow that we can get or some other means, so. Thank you. Nothing else? All right, thank you for being here. Thank you for serving. We have public comment now, so I'm assuming people are here for public comment. We'll start Benjamin Matthews, you raise your hand. Oh, you're gonna have to stand up at the podium now. See, this might make people chicken, I don't know, but. Not Benjamin.
Okay.
You're on, you're on.
My name is Benjamin Matthew. I'm from 4369 Oakleaf Lane in the Oakleaf Homeowners Association. I just had a couple of questions. The first question I have is my association wanted to know if there's been any updates to the for the specially used application for 4359 Oak, Illinois 22. Second thing is, I've been noticing there's a lot of construction along Old McKenney Road, so, and I didn't recall seeing anything in the village newsletter about it. So I was just wondering if, you know, there could be some insight into what's going on with that. The third thing is probably more of a comment, now that the Baptist Seminary has been approved over in the old CF Industries property. I know we've been, there's been discussion over time about connecting our trail system. And while we still have those folks in a position where we can ask them to do things, I think it would be, that would be a great opportunity to ask them to connect whatever trails that are going over there and seeing if we can, you know, complete any missing links, if there are, if it's possible. And if they're amenable to working with the village on that, because I think that would be something that would benefit everybody. Thank you.
All right, so let's, let's see, Oakleaf, I'm down Oakleaf, the temple there and.
They are working on the review. I think Jill can would know more about where Karen's at, I think with that she's working on reviewing that currently. So there has been some further work on it, but no significant updates.
So the next step would be what, to bring it before the plan commission for a public hearing, or how's that go?
That would be, I mean, eventually, yes.
Okay, we're not there yet, so there's, I guess, no change. There's an application. Application's been submitted. Okay, got it. So it's at the same place it's been for a long time. The, I would love to know what's going on in Old McHenry Road, so I would, I was, that surprised me too. They're putting, it looks like they're putting sewer pipes for drainage, right, runoff drainage along their sides of the roads. Does anyone know?
No, we don't know, and we were actually surprised by a two-week village staff because the first we were notified of it was a resident called and was blocked out of their driveway.
So we don't know what the county's.
Trying to find out some more information, but unfortunately I don't have that.
So as soon as we find out, we'll let you know, but it's, it's like popped like a week or so ago, right? It's just like nowhere. And I'm like, oh, what's that? And I never had a chance to ask about it, so thank you for asking, so I could ask. And then I think the pathway idea is a great idea. We know that we have one advocate, one trustee over here that would love to see that too, right? Yes, so it's not, it's been gotten preliminary approval, right? So it's not, it's got to come back before the board eventually, correct? So that's, it's not done yet. So we got a little work to do, but that's something that, that's a great ask. Right? So that's another connection point that we could use, so great, great point. Right, other public comment? Yeah, so the, it's still in process. Nothing's, nothing's, it's an application is all we have. It's not, if I understand correctly, it's not complete. They're asking for information, so it's gone no further than that. Still in that, something's been filed, but it's incomplete.
So it's still under staff review?
Yeah, it's been, you're right, it's been a long time. I don't, do you know why it's being held up? Does anyone know? I don't know.
They haven't submitted additional information.
Okay, so we're waiting on them for additional information, so.
You can contact staff. You can send us an email and follow up and we can see.
Yeah, you know, I should, I'll let you go in one second. I should announce that our village manager and his wife had their first child. And it was a preemie, so they just brought her home last night, spent the first night at home. So he's with his wife, her name is Lucy, and she's doing really well, so amazing. She, she, yeah, he'll be happy to hear that and he's gonna be, you know, out for a couple of weeks trying to get everything all sorted out there, so that's why he's not here. So our assistant village manager is here tonight. And you might be filling in for the next meeting too. So Dana, all right, so next public comment? That's right, you gotta go up to the podium, sorry.
Association. In the last meeting, we presented. Importance of our project that's going on with our village and. All right, and thank you, I will send that to you. Thank you very much for the response. And I think our sense about the issues, our association issues, and we will. What's remaining is really is a safety, is residence safety issue, which is related to the water we're dealing from the railroad. The railroad is refusing to supply water quality reports, which actually is a red flag for us, which is basically why they're refusing. There's some chemicals, this or that, or ores, whatever that comes out of the area that's gonna come into our pond and maybe destroy the habitat of our conservancy and maybe affect our water. And that's gonna be a safety for us. So I think, you know, I ask the village to look into favor into this issue because. And so that we need to ensure that, and not likely the water will be okay, but the thing is we, we owe it to ourselves and to our residents and also to protect us against any liabilities in the future, that this issue is properly addressed. Another issue is the water level that is, you know, I mentioned, you mentioned your letter according to the project is gonna be, is gonna bring the water level 14 inches. And that's not what the board told us when we voted on this project. It's gonna, they told us it's gonna be huge and drop. And because the reason I say 14 inch drop is gonna be that for, actually that and from the, for our residents because part of the, on the southern end is very shallow. So if you bring it 14 inches down on a normal basis, and then we have a dry song like we had this summer, then it's gonna go down about another foot and a half and drive the whole southern part of the pond and creating market, creating nuisance and other mosquitoes and things growing and all that stuff. And so then that's, so that's something that we, we ask you. To bring it to, as the board told us from the beginning, which is few inches. So we wanna try to control it to six inches drop, not 14 inches.
All right, thank you for that. You know, I'm gonna ask one question. There was a, just, and I know you have thought too, but on the water testing, Chris, trustee Baroski brought up the idea, you know, we have to do the annual testing, right, for, for certification? And I don't know when that is. I don't know, is that something that, that we could do as a part of what we have to do annually? When would that be though? So it's five years from now? But, but it wouldn't, but there, obviously the project's gonna start when, in the spring or something, or is it starting now, or?
Yeah, I think they want to start it as soon as possible, but you know, let's see if we can make sure things are done right.
But I don't know if there's, I just, that was a great idea, trustee Baroski from the last meeting. If there's a way to do it, just to give them peace of mind without, you know, I don't know what else to do, right? They, they could hire somebody privately to test it or whatever, but if we were, had a way to do it through our annual.
Yeah, the village is required to do that anyway, as far as their, as part of their I E P A permit.
Okay. But it's, but is it like five years from now, or is it, we do, can do it now?
Well, we do, we inspect every year.
Every year, okay.
20% of the outfalls every year, so that's how you get once every five years.
I don't know about the timing.
It's on a rotating basis, right?
Wouldn't be what, till next year, or when would it be, or the?
It wouldn't be until after the culvert was installed, because there's nothing to sample.
I see.
Coming into the village at this point.
So, so I think we have a solution to give you some peace of mind, right? We can share that information?
On January or so.
Well, whenever the, it has to be done after the pipe is put in, right? So you at least.
Yeah, it'll be after the pipe is put in, the inspections are typically done in, over the summer months.
So that might be a solution to, to help, at least make, you know, feel more comfortable.
We would like to have tested our water farm right now before the fire, the water start coming into it. And then, I think it's really better to test the water that's coming in, the first things, you know, like just they find their, they know this is not our association, association. But I think if you test the water coming in, this will make sure that this water is not contaminated and dangerous to our residents.
Well, so I think this is where, I mean legally, we, you have to accept the water per drainage laws, Illinois drainage laws, right? Yeah. And it has to, it has to come through. So right now, what started this whole thing was there's a the Canadian National Railroad says, hey, wait a minute, this water's building up and we have to, they had to drive their trains slower over that area because it's not stable. And then, as I understand it, the village stepped in and said, wait a minute, don't just open that up because you'll flood out the, you know, your subdivision because you have an outflow that's not functioning properly. So, so, and somebody else can help me out more here than I have it, but so is, actually the village took a responsible act saying, slow down, working with the HOA, let's make sure that that, you know, that pipe doesn't get installed because then it will flood all your homes out and before you have an outlet, place for the water, right? And so it's all been engineered and designed. And, you know, as far as the village in this process, we're just working directly with your HOA through the permitting process. We don't really have a say, yes or no.
That's exactly right. Yeah, so our role in this one is as the permitting authority, which is fairly limited. I mean, to get, to get the right, the permits you need to do this work, there are certain objective things you need to establish, and that's for an engineer to decide whether these metrics have been met. And if they are, then you get the permit, and if they have not, then you don't get the permit. So if you have information that, that is relevant, that may, that may be some harm that perhaps we're not appreciating, I'd encourage you to provide that information to Jeff, he's right there, he's our village engineer. Otherwise, if, if it's more about the decision to do this work or the scope of it, that decision is more with the HOA than now with the village.
Well, the safety issue, like I said, the water quality, the water level, I think, yeah, that's. Other piece of information, maybe that's, which is easement, the easement requirement issue, it was for the village. Village dropped that requirement, now it's only the county requiring if contrary easement. I guess, in this case. In a perspective, doesn't the village have to follow the, what the county requirements are for easement?
Absolutely. No, it's more complicated, Matt. Sometimes we would follow the county's, but in this case, we're, it's simply, we had, I think we had requested a need, I don't exactly know the pursuit, what we did to get these, and we, we could simply request it and have it be granted.
Because in our, our laws, there is no engine, allowing residents to get easements. You know, just from, you know, for many of our reasons, but so that's in the end, it's an association issue. You know, taking it to something.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think we have done everything we can within the, the limited scope of our purview on this to ensure that everything is done correctly and according to the proper engineering standards and everyone's safety is protected. But I think it sounds like what you're describing more is, is what needs to be done, what we're planning to do and whether or not it should be done at all. That decision is made by the HOA. We just sort of receive that decision and make it done correctly. So we've done sort of that role, but I think your next step is with the HOA.
The issue of the water quality and how about the issue of, is it possible if you raise this level, water level reduction to be less than 14 inches or a few inches of it?
Like Bob said, you know, that's a function of the Property Owners Association and their proposed project. What I can tell you is there's a benefit to lowering that water level to 14 inches because that helps with the, the push-pull of more water coming into the subdivision through that culvert pipe from the Canadian National Railroad and also as up against, you know, protecting the houses from flooding.
I agree. And just one thing, is it possible at least to have a just ability to, like, put in a gift out?
I think that is another thing that you would need to talk to your Property Owners Association about to see if that design could be modified, and if that's something the association would, would support.
Hey, one other thought for you too, I was thinking. So if it goes down, plant material will grow back in there. And so the question is, and we have a senior quarter conservancy commission, I don't know what ideas they have to recommend plantings that could be put in there too, that could handle those shallow areas that would bring, you know, you know, handle where, where it floods and then it, when it dries out, there's a plant there that naturally, you know, looks like lawn growth, right? Which right now it's not growing because it's, it's flooded, it's not. So I don't know if the, you know, we could ask the, village staff could ask this senior quarter conservancy committee to ask, because I think if I understand correctly, all the, all the homeowners near the pond own that portion of the pond, right? So what plants could be planted or what could be put there that would, you know, beautify in the, when it's, when the water's down? You have an option there too, because there's plants that'll grow there and they'll survive the floods too. No, because you're worried about it's, the water's gonna come down and it's just gonna look, it's gonna be smelly, nasty, ugly. But there's stuff that'll grow back there eventually, so how, what could be done? Yeah, natural grasses of some sort. I don't know how expensive anything is, but that's, you know, wetland restoration. That's, you know, that's what a lot of the HOAs have to do, right? Because that's essentially what you'd be doing in that area is restoring it somehow. So I don't know, just a thought.
Yeah, it does, the only thing I say, I mean, some residents might not agree with it. I'm not able to deal with it, it's sort of, it's pretty great that I know my neighbor who owns that southern end and she bought the property because it's on the water.
Right.
If the water disappears, then you have, you know, you know, you know, that. Or it's here.
Right. Well, that's a possibility, so I, I don't know, can you take that back? Yeah.
Yeah, you can contact Bill Atoll and Jill. You know, we talked about it, C S D C.
Just gave you some ideas, right?
Yeah, sure. Anytime we are, we're having a petition in the association right now.
Okay.
Process to try to get to that whole, that 14 inch. And then we're gonna have an internal discussion or something. You'll hear about it, so I would ask to hold up my things and please.
All right, thank you for being here.
All right.
Thank you.
Very much.
Yes. Oh, you missed your turn, Rick. Do you want, do you have something to share with us? You're, you're on the agenda tonight, so anything to bring before the board? No, you're good. You want, do you want to say anything? Yeah, go ahead, please. No, I didn't mean to cut you out, I was saying you're, you're here now. Please. Rick Scardino from Autumn Woods. Thanks for volunteering and thanks for being here. Now you're on video too, that's pretty sharp, huh? What do you think of this village hall?
Us, you know. I guess, you know. Our insurance. You know, people.
Didn't we get them to take it down or something? I thought.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Silence in district there.
Got it.
You know, and, you know. Over there, you got. Us, yeah. Off, off ice in front of the. Us, we have the constant quality.
Does the P U D say that there's only a certain amount of time the sign can be up? Do you know, can we research it?
I can look, I have to look it up.
We just look at it so we can look at the P U D and see what it, because there, can it be up there forever? Correct. Well, it's whatever the, whatever the village at the time agreed when the, when they approved the development, that's what, that's what it would be. Really?
Yeah, so maybe we get in touch with Joe.
I understand why the.
Created in such a way, and again, my understanding also is that back for a builder, he pays phenomenal property taxes on being a old center for him. But his six lots, my understanding, please wait. Yet, you know. I won't say, well, listen, I think. Now I won't say wow, listen, I think. I think it was seven years ago. Or sure, so mail.
So Rick, we'll we'll have um village council look up the P U D to see if we don't have some language there to help out. Anything else? Well, thank you for serving. Thank you for bringing it. I appreciate it. Okay, any other public comment? If not, we'll move to the public uh safety report from Lieutenant uh Keith Kaiser. Hope you have to get up at the podium too. Thank you.
Westin's had an alarm system, so.
Any questions? Yeah, when it's usually there's something odd when it's just one home like that. So there's probably more to the story. So thank you for that. Yep. Okay. Thank you. Thanks for being here. All right, um we have a consent agenda before us. Um we have a few items on it. We have approval of of the bills. Um approval of the minutes from the regular meeting from September twenty third. Approval of executive session meeting minutes from that same night, the twenty September twenty third. And then there's a raffle um for um this time it's the country Meadows P T O that's doing a raffle on ten twenty three. They want to waive the license fee. I know we haven't updated the application, Chris, but uh I'm hoping that you'll go ahead and. Approve this anyway, so. Anyways, anyone have anything they want to withdraw from the consent agenda? Any questions they have or does somebody want to make a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda items.
Moved by trustee Barowski, second of trustee O'Connor. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barowski.
Hi.
Trustee.
Hi.
Trustee Harris.
Hi.
Hold on, got something wrong there. When you called trustee Tanucci, I I know Kent did not respond, so somebody else somebody else did.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Okay, so do we have every all yeses?
Who didn't who didn't call trustee Tanucci again to ensure that the proof note is proper.
Trustee Tanucci.
Hi. Okay, so all eyes. The motion is carried. Thank you. Um we have the report of the village engineer.
Okay, so uh the reports in the board packet, a couple of highlights tonight. Village Hall expansion, uh the work is ongoing in the existing part of the building. And from uh all reports is uh going pretty well. Uh looks like it'll be done, what, by uh early Christmas present for somebody? So anyway, I think it'll be done uh next month in all seriousness. Um the road ram. Work is done on Checker Road. Um they've get uh maybe just a little bit of punchless work left over there. Uh the work at the village hall is uh has started, the stark outside, but they have cleared the uh trees over there to make way for the parking lot expansion. So I'm still working on a final schedule for everything. I know the village is uh anxious to uh see that red barn. Or red shed, I should say, um and find its final resting place. Uh the Archer Parking Lot Bio Squails that was approved by the board at the last meeting, construction of that has started. D K Contractors is out there uh with a backhoe uh excavating for that. Um, Mr. Matthew, he brought up the uh the pathway uh uh topic. And um I talked with trustee O'Connor earlier today and we're gonna schedule a meeting uh by the end of the month to. Uh make sure we move that thing forward. I think uh October thirtieth was kind of the date that we were targeting for that. Jumping down number eleven, uh the Illinois Route Twenty Two Widening Plan um or project. So the state received bids for the advanced tree clearing on September nineteenth. And I heard from them last week that they were moving towards a pre-construction meeting with Clean Cut to um start that work. There's the Northern Log Eared Bat in the vicinity, so they have to um clear those trees by the end of March. To comply with their habitat and nesting habits. So I'm gonna get some more information on that as far as when work starts and how that is going to be um. Um accomplished, because there's quite a few trees that uh need to be done there, you know, far as traffic impacts and things like that. So. Um I haven't got much information from uh I dot yet, but uh I am I'm working on that. Uh advanced grading, uh after the trees are cleared, they've got to do some grading work to make way for the utilities to be relocated. And I uh utilities, meaning like ComEd, Nycor, uh Comcast and the like. Um the state has uh. Recognized that they need a uh Army Corps permit for the wetland impacts on that. So I uh they had originally thought that that work was going to be bid in early twenty twenty six. And now it's been moved back to June twenty twenty six because of the permit. So we'll see uh how that unfolds. And then the other big thing with the Route Twenty Two Widening Project, uh there was an I G A circulated to the village. Quite some time ago uh that the village had some comments on and we've been uh asking I dot for a response uh to that. And an updated I G A. Um we've been told the end of the month uh several times. Uh the current end of the month is by the end of October. Um so the last I heard from I dot, it was it's under final internal review. So whatever that means, but I'll keep uh the board updated as I as I am informed as well. Uh and then number twelve, uh the state came out with the their next version of the multi-year plan. Which is schedules their projects throughout the state. Uh this year, this uh the current version is the twenty twenty six to twenty thirty one. Five-year multi-year plan. Uh unfortunately, Route Twenty Two and eighty three um has been uh moved back a year. So construction of that is anticipated somewhere between twenty seven and thirty one, twenty twenty seven and twenty thirty one.
I still had a hard time finding it in there. I know you said it was trying to read down, right? I didn't. It was there. Okay. I didn't see it, so. But I was looking at they had those infographics. Maybe I wasn't looking at the right thing. Like all the great things that are being done, but not in our village. Yes.
All right, so a few things going on. There's a a lot uh more um updates on permits and things of that nature. But uh I will uh turn it uh over if there's any questions.
I do have a question. Can I ask? Um so if there's gonna be any cutting and regrading, we need to know what it is and we need to tell the residents in advance. Or else um our phones are gonna be ringing and they'll be yelling at us, so.
So they've they've got to, the window to remove trees is November one to March thirty first. So my thought is that with a advanced tree clearing contract being bid in June. They can start work before November one of twenty twenty six, which means they have to remove the trees this year.
Yeah, mother, what is it gonna look like when they, you know, so that's why I think we need to know that.
Yeah.
So I mean, like it's, you know, right.
So. Yeah, it's it's all wrapped together and uh um getting information from I dot is uh sometimes difficult.
Well, as much as you can find out, so that you know, if we have to say something, we can too, right? Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right, thank you for that report. Um now we're into the the um village president and trustee report. Um I just was gonna mention a couple of things. On Saturday, um there's there's two events. Um one of them, I don't think I'll be able to make it, but there's a, we were all invited to it to this, um the Hindu temple on Checker Road. Um the Diwali and and a card celebration from ten thirty to twelve thirty. Um the board was invited and then Limitless Strength is doing a ribbon cutting at four P M. Uh Anne and Eugene Mazanovsky, if I said it right, um are doing that Health Fest um this weekend. And so they're doing the ribbon cutting, you know, towards the end of their Health Fest. And then there's um an invite to um a dedication ceremony. For Barbara Turner on Sunday at one P M. They're gonna unveil a memorial plaque in her honor of life. At the Reed Turner um facility over there um off of Old McHenry Roads. I just wanted to make everyone aware of that, so. And that's all I have for my report. Trustee Barowski?
I'll be out of town this weekend, so there's my response to all three of those invitations. Thank you. Um I don't have a specific report on on my. Um I don't have a specific report today. I do have some questions maybe or some random thoughts. Um Christmas lights will probably be hung relatively soon in downtown. I know we allocated money for Christmas li- holiday lighting around the village and multiple areas beside just downtown. Do we have a plan in place to do that? Um and what does that look like? Has anybody worked on that at all?
We've been working on it. We don't have. A time plan yet, but we are working on. There's something.
Okay, do you know when? Because I imagine downtown's hanging lights within days, if not weeks, right? Okay, because if we're not doing something outside of downtown in addition to downtown and we just get a bill again. You know how that discussion's gonna go, right? Thank you. I appreciate it, Dana. I hope you guys are working on it to get it done.
We have updated information, also talking to Ryan about the. The bridge lights and the trustee Tanucci was asking about those, so um. Talked about out there, plans are for those and get the uh. Those that I have for what they're getting.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that update. Um. Um the social media question, um we sometimes highlight new businesses in town and what their activities are and maybe a ribbon ceremony. But um do we want or can we reach out to the um seminary and see if they want us to highlight their activities? And what they're planning on doing at the C F Industries to sort of highlight them as well? I mean, obviously, that's a pretty significant addition to Long Grove and I wonder if it's appropriate or if they're interested in us. Spending any energy to at least highlight them and tell the residents kind of what they're up to over there.
Yeah, so how do we uh so we're not a hundred percent done there yet, right? So um we're we're talking the C F I building in the Baptist Bible College. So as far as, yeah, what could we uh say or not say or whatever? Because Chris was saying, tell people about it. We can ta- we can tell about what's approvals, I mean the planning and you know those. The plans of everything is a is a public document, so we can uh. We have not really any limitations. I mean, you thought you sort of advertised what the approval was and what.
Yeah, and just let 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 the residents know what what's going on over there. I mean, we've got all these social media tools. And yet I'm not sure if we're really highlighting what the plan is for that property.
Are you asking about the like the approvals? There or?
No, just highlighting the fact that there's a seminary moving into Long Grove.
That's actually gonna be in October Connections. There's an article about that.
Okay, very good.
Okay, good.
That's actually in that it's I actually just.
Okay. Perfect, thank you. Yeah, no, I bring that up because I know the church organization is using a lot of volunteer labor to. Spruce the place up and I thought it'd be good to just say, hey, that's what they're doing over there and anybody wants to go, you know, do their thing, they can help them. Okay, no, that's a thank you very much. I appreciate it. End of report.
Thank you, trustee Barowski. Trustee Gaten, do you have a report?
Um yes, uh just kind of highlighting what what went around uh downtown this past week. Through through the historic downtown uh Long Grove Business Association. Um on uh Thursday, that witches' night out for throughout the town. And it was phenomenal. It was twice as big as last year and it's it's if you've never spent time, it's it's it basically runs from five o'clock to eight o'clock. The stores stay open, so it's increased a lot more business for all the business uh for every business downtown. And it's just been a great fun event where you're seeing everyone in witches' hats. And it's it's, yeah, it was, yeah, it's 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 just getting bigger and bigger and it's a lot of fun and a lot, a great community event. Um as well as on Saturday, we had the um make your own scarecrow. So if you go through downtown, you sell the scarecrows that we put up. Well, that was all made by, you know, families and people. From Long Grove and from our surrounding communities come in and it's it's another just great community event and great family event. Because they they we also gave a uh from the um Mulch Center, the Mulch Center gave away free pumpkins. Uh they also had this big pumpkin, you know, guess the weight for chance to win a thousand dollars. And it was just another just a great community event. So it's uh. So it's a lot of good things going on downtown and then as far as this weekend, yes, I will go to the Health Fest. And that ribbon cutting on the Sunday, I unfortunately can't now. That's also another downtown event. It's a pet parade, which is also a fun event. Everyone that has pets, you know, people love their dogs and they love to dress them up. So they dress them up and we actually walk them around downtown and it's that's another great community event. So uh that that's uh that's it from here. End of report.
Thanks, trustee Gaten. Trustee Harris. Not putting you on the spot, I just highlighting it. That's your report? All right, end of report. Okay, trustee Jamil. Trustee O'Connor.
You know when? Does it say when it goes to?
Well.
We can have it promoted uh.
Yeah.
On social media like right away.
Right.
Have them do it tomorrow.
We talked about all of this.
Anything else?
The website is. No, end of report.
Thank you. No, you're good. Trustee Tanucci, nothing to report. Hey. Does the village manager have a report? Okay. So then there's no reason to go on executive session night. So I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Okay. Moved by trustee Harris, seconded by. Second by trustee Broowski, all in favor? Oh, Dr. Jamil said, oh, oh, Dr. Jamil said second. Okay, got it. Get that gift. I didn't hear it. So all, all in favor? All right. Meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone. Sorry, I didn't hear you, Dr. Jamil. You're going to stop the recording.